All right, let us call to order the October 3rd, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. Let's start with the role.
Acting Chair Atkins.
Here.
Commissioner Zelinski.
Here.
Commissioner Yanisak.
Here.
Commissioner Finch.
Here.
Commissioner Ballard.
Here.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Here.
Commissioner Lark.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, I will now read the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Shahobes people and their successors, the Talalip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society. We're now moving on to approval of the minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I would move approval of the minutes.
I second.
All right, since the motion has been made and seconded, I think we're ready to do a vote.
Commissioner Lark.
I abstain.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard.
Abstain.
Commissioner Finch.
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak.
Yes.
Commissioner Zelinski.
Yes.
Acting Chair Atkins.
Yes. Would any commissioners like to give a report? All right, we'll move on to staff comment.
I think this is the first time in my tenure here that I have no staff comments for you this evening, but if you would like to lead me to something, I'd be happy to take any questions or any suggestions. Otherwise, I think Becky's going to cover a couple of things under the comp plan update, and we'll be back in a couple of weeks, but yeah.
I do have a question. Given that we're at the top of a quarter, we previously talked about metrics related to permits.
Yes.
And housing starts and whatnot. I think you were going to do some research as to how to create some sort of ongoing list of metrics that you could report out on.
Yeah.
How's that going?
We have two. Thank you for the prompt there. There are actually a couple of things that didn't seem worth mentioning because they're in progress, but I'll take that. We're working on two things. One is we have an active land use projects map, an interactive map that anybody can go to. If you go to the City of Everett Map Gallery, I think you can search that and you'll get there. You can see every active project that's going on in the city. We're going to do a second version of that that's a little bit more curated to the notable projects. So the full active projects map covers everything from a new deck, or a sign, or accessory dwelling unit. So we're going to focus on the more substantial housing projects or commercial projects that have some interest to it. As part of that, we're going to review what goes into the active projects map. There are sometimes questions about what's in and what's out. For instance, if something goes straight to a building permit, sometimes it won't show in there, and then the underlying data can provide some kind of longitudinal or over time data on that. So that's one that is underway right now, and we may even have something for you by the next meeting. Number two is we hired Frank. Frank Hung is brand-new to the city as of, I think it was not this week, but last Monday. Frank is special projects manager for housing and is going to focus on housing. And one of the tasks that he's going to be looking at is a dashboard of indicators related specifically to housing. He's just getting oriented, he's just getting started, so that work is just getting started. But that would be the second kind of avenue for getting that data.
That's great, thanks. Is Frank a permanent position, or is it a grant-funded position?
It's temporary. Frank is a permanent position.
Wonderful.
To the extent that those, yeah, exist. Yes.
Any further questions for staff?
No, but it's something I probably should have gone in quick reports. Recently, I redid my entire living room, down to the studs, all that stuff. And I worked a lot with the city permit inspectors, and I just wanted to note how wonderful they were to work with. They all did a fantastic job, so I just wanted to give a little kudos out for everybody and say how much I appreciated it. So staff was great.
All right, with that, before we go into public comment, just have some short instructions for participants. To those of you joining us remotely, please mute your microphone, or if you are calling in, mute your phone by pressing star six. At each opportunity for public comments, I will ask if anyone wants to speak. If you are participating remotely and would like to provide comment, unmute your microphone or press star six on your phone. Please provide your name for the record, and when you're done, please mute again. If you are in attendance and would like to comment, please fill out a speaker sign-in sheet located on the table by the door. So first, do we have anyone in person that would like to provide comment? All right, do we have anyone online?
No comments.
All right. Then we'll move on to Agenda Item 4A, School Height Allowance Code Amendment Public Hearing. Looks like we're going to start with a presentation.
Thank you, Acting Chair Atkins. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. I'm York Stevens-Wajda, Planning Director. Today's proposal, we had a briefing on a couple of weeks ago, deals with the maximum height for schools and how that is addressed in our development regulations. This focuses on K through 12 schools, of which there are 26 in the City of Everett, and out of those 26, 18 of which are limited to 28 feet high by the maximum building height map, and that's the underlying zone height. Many of the schools are within our single-family residential zones, which are by rule limited to 28 feet under the current regulations. The other eight schools have different height regulations, and the proposal is to bring this out of a set cap and into a discretionary case-by-case review process. The applicability is to schools as defined in code. We're not proposing to change this definition, elementary, junior, senior, high schools, and related uses. This does not cover higher education, preschools, childcare, daycare. There are a series of specific use standards for schools that are in code, and they have placement requirement, location requirement for different types of schools, where they can be located. There are some restrictions on locating buildings with respect to residentially-zoned properties, as well as a setback for any height that exceeds 25 feet, and an exemption from some of these standards for very small and accessory structures. Schools are allowed in almost every zone within the city, prohibited in the high, heavy industrial and agricultural zones. The review process by which school, new school, or remodeled school application would go through differs based on the zones. It is a conditional use permit in the RS and R1 zones. It is an administrative use permit in the R2, R2A, UR3, and UR4, so the other residential zones, as well as the light industrial zones. And it is a permitted use in the neighborhood business, business, and mixed urban zones. A quick rundown of the two conditional and administrative use processes. The conditional use permit is hearing examiner decision. Administrative use permit is a planning director decision. For both of them, there is a notice to the public via posting a sign on the site and mailing to within either 150 or 500 feet of the subject site. And there are a series of criteria that must be satisfied for a proposal, an application to be accepted, and conditions may be placed under either one of these routes to maintain compatibility with those criteria. Specifically related to height, I would point to criteria number three on the left and number one on the right, which are about the same, and address compatibility of proposed structures and improvements with surrounding properties, including the height of proposed buildings. And so there's already a step of review of the specific design proposal with an application for newer remodeled school for that compatibility with neighboring structures. And this becomes important because this will be the key focus rather than that flat limit on building height. A little bit about why this is important. We went over this last month, but there were some errors on the slide that have been corrected, so all of these numbers should be accurate at this point. So right now, in Snohomish County, we have 157,000 school-aged youth aged five to 19, so roughly in that K through 12 student age. That is projected to increase by 19% or by 30,000 additional students, children, presumably students within Snohomish County by 2050. So take that 30,000 new youth in Snohomish County, and under the regional growth strategy that we're planning for, Everett is planning for about 20% of the county's population. And so with either a low methodology or a higher number methodology, we can plan for 4,000 to 6,000 additional school-aged youth within the City of Everett by 2050. Note, this is kind of disconnected from the comprehensive plan, so I'm using 2050 as a horizon rather than 2044. So just keep in mind that when we talk the comp plan, it's a little bit of a shorter span. Figured that the school buildings last a long time, so it was worth a little bit longer view, and we have all the numbers for the 2050 horizon. So 4,000 to 6,000 additional five-to-19-year-olds within Everett would be possible under the regional growth strategy and Office Financial Management's population projections. Looking to the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction's guidance for school construction, we have between 115 and 173 square feet per student. That is the median within Washington State for both new and existing schools, and it is less space for elementary and more for high schools. If you add the smaller amount of space and the smaller number, you get 470,000 square feet of school buildings that could be necessary by 2050. If you use the higher number of space need and the higher population growth in that youth category, you could get up to a million square feet of school space needs by 2050, or by whatever time we get to that proportion of, or that number of school-aged students within the city. That is a lot of school building needs, and it is going to be difficult or impossible to accommodate that, sticking with the 28 feet in all cases across those school properties. So the proposal, going back to the use standards for schools, would remove the limitation on schools within 25 feet of a residentially-zoned property, and it would allow schools to exceed the maximum building height in the maximum building height map when considered under administrative or a conditional use permit. So this could only be possible if it was reviewed using that criteria that I mentioned a few slides ago about compatibility with adjacent properties. In the cases where it is a P on the use matrix, you wouldn't normally go to an administrative or conditional use permit process. If the school needed to exceed the underlying zone height in those cases, then they would need to elect to go into at least an administrative use process. Those zones that have a P under them, though, typically have higher height limits to begin with, so that shouldn't be an issue, but either way, you would need to come for a discretionary review. Also worth noting that with both of those, there are appeal routes if neighbors or members of the public or anybody feels that the decision-making authority, the planning director, or the hearing examiner made the wrong call. Also doing some minor cleanup to the definitions, just the titles were different between the use matrix and the definitions, so just clarifying that, no substantive change here. And then I left out of both the slides and the original motion, or the original resolution, that we are adding a cross-reference to that special regulations section. You see that at your places is a revised proposed resolution, and on the last cell, the last page in there, you can see where we're adding C-section 19 dot 13 dot 280, maybe? Just so that the reader knows that there are special regulations involved. That's a standard practice for other ones, and we're just kind of cleaning that up. So neither of those are substantive, just for legibility clarity. That's the extent of the briefing. Be happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Zelinski?
Yes, I'd like to just ask the staff to run through the administrative review process. You've indicated that there is a notification process that's required, and my question is if a property owner or neighbors have some questions or concerns about a proposal, how do they take those forward since there is no public hearing process?
There would be a comment process. I thought there was an open public hearing involved. If you give me a moment, I will check on that. But certainly, there's an opportunity to comment to the decision-making authority, whether it's in a public hearing sense or in written comment. That is a consideration. And in fact, though, that local knowledge that is brought by those comments is really important because the folks who live and walk by the schools and the properties on a daily basis know some things that aren't always readily apparent from City Hall. Three, A, and two. So the conditional use permit process does have a public hearing. And the administrative use permit does not have a public hearing. So for a conditional use permit, there is a public hearing and an opportunity to address the hearing examiner directly. For an administrative use permit, we would take comments and incorporate those into the record and use them to guide the decision.
Any further comments or questions?
Isn't there a comment period in the Type 2 decision upon the noticing? So you're going to mail that out? So they do have the opportunity in a time period to notify you of any concerns before the, before that's complete?
Right, yes. So written, an opportunity for written comment is made with both of those. The opportunity for a verbal comment in a public hearing setting would be only for the conditional use. But yes, written comment, comment period, and that would definitely guide our decisions.
Then my actual question was, can you remind me the height limit in the UR3 and the UR4?
The UR3 zone, give me a moment. The, the, the basic answer is that it varies. It's actually the maximum building height map that determines the heights outside of the single-family zones, which are all 28 feet. So it would depend. Some UR4 zones have a six-story height, some have a three-story height. There is a quirk to that, though, in that the UR3 zone has a 50-foot height limit. However, the UR3 zone is also on the maximum building height map, and in some cases, those two numbers do not agree. We've had to address that. There is actually a property-seeking development that had the 50-foot height and also had, I want to say, six or seven floors on the height map, and so the question is which one carried? We're going to fix that as soon as we can.
And I guess I was kind of thinking, is there a reason why you wouldn't, in the UR3 and the UR4, just make the, the school height then, or the school application then permitted instead of conditional or administrative, just making it more simple for them?
Certainly could look at the review processes for all of these. There are other things besides height that go into that. There could be the circulation, there could be the location of the building, there could be even the design of the building, school bus drop-offs and parking. They're pretty complex sites, and so my guess is that there's value in having that extra level of review regardless, but that's definitely something that we should always be looking at.
I would, to that, just think that, how to streamline it, how to make it more efficient, in the back of your mind, I know you probably already think about that, which is why we're cleaning up the language to begin with, but it kind of goes back to Commissioner Ballard's point. What can we do to kind of reduce the barriers? Because I'm sure no school wants to wait forever to have an application approved.
Yeah, I can take that. It would be, it would slow this process down to change the review process, I think, at least a little bit, and, but that's something I'll take a look at, maybe look at some recent projects and how it went through that process and see how cumbersome it is. Maybe chat with the school districts and our land use team and see if that's something we could fold into the periodic update or into a different process.
Yeah, I wouldn't want it to slow this down. Thinking in the future, so, understand. Thanks.
Just want to echo two excellent points over there. I think that goes into kind of my, the scene-setting questions I had, which is like, how, when was the last time this was changed? How often do we change this? How often do we change the administrative condition? Ultimately, what I'm getting at is how do we maximize operational discretion for the school district to achieve their end state, which is educating children? And if it means building a higher building, modifying what goes on there, allowing them to say, we're going to put housing here, because it helps us achieve our end state of educating children. Like, how do we maximize? Because we're doing, like, the planning threshold we're looking at is in 2050. And in 2050, like, you know, if we are setting our planning conditions now, we either need to be changing it constantly or allow for a maximum discretion in the meantime. Because in 2050, the United States will not be the largest economy in the world. It will not be the largest military power in the world. Lot will change in the next 30 years. So we need maximum discretion to adapt to a very highly dynamic world, and that go, trickles all the way down to us here at the local level. So, I mean, I guess that, like, going in there, how do we maintain that operational discretion for school districts?
I would say that we have a couple of projects that are going to run through this process in the very near future, and I will keep a very close eye on that for inefficiencies. There are a couple other places where there are constraints by the zoning, the development regulations, that would not have relief like we're doing for the heights. It has not been flagged by the school districts as a problem, but there are setbacks and other sorts of things that might constrain them in certain cases, at least a little bit, that may need to be looked at. So I would say if it works for the commission, we'll watch this. I think Jackson Elementary might be the first one in the gate, and it may be as early as this winter. And that would be a good learning experience. I think rethink zoning made some changes. I don't know how significant they were. That was 2020, in terms of when the last, the last changes were. But for the most part, this all kind of comes down to the main zoning codes restrictions. There aren't many that are specific to schools.
And then just kind of following up, then, I mean, I know several school districts have now leased their property to, to private developers and have used it as a stream of income in Snohomish County. When they want to seek to repurpose a school, the resource, like, their cheap, their desired end state, like, how, how would zoning play into that? Is it just revert to the normal height? Or if the building's already built and they want to repurpose it to, say, for example, rental units, market rate rental units, and just repurpose and renovate the building? Does that change that? What do we, like, how does that, how do school districts dynamically use it? How are we thinking about school districts that dynamically use their assets? Over.
You would regulate the new use as its new use, so it wouldn't matter if it was originally a school, or it was originally an industrial building, or a shop, or anything like that. It's, you would review the reuse of the building as what it's going to be, and we do have provisions for adaptive reuse of properties that can give some flexibility in the regulations that would otherwise apply, non-conforming building. And then there's a specific adaptive reuse provision as well. I would, we need a lot of that land for schools, too, so I guess I'd be hesitant to, to convert too much of it because it's really expensive to get back.
I mean, the, the school districts, I'm thinking, I mean, they still retain use of the land. Like, it's still theirs, and so after the lease is up, they will do whatever they want if it goes back to another school. And the nice thing is, like, it allows them to flex and be flexible as their students' populations ebb and flow, so.
Yeah, we would regulate that as any other landowner, then, so no easier or harder.
Any further questions or comment? All right, at this time, I'd entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I move to open the public hearing. I second.
All right, the motion has been made and seconded. We're going to do a voice vote instead of a roll-call vote this time. So all those in favor of opening the public hearing, please say by, or please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? All right, great, wasn't that a lot quicker? Do we have anyone who would, who is here in person to provide a public comment on this item? Anyone online?
No comments.
All right. At this time, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All right, the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
I have a question before we act on this. The draft resolution we have suggests that there is a public hearing on the 17th. If that continues to be true, we should probably not close it at this point.
Let me look at what it says. Is that referring to the? Yep. That's something that you could amend? I would suggest amending October 17 to October 3. That was our original schedule, I imagine. That could be after the public hearing, it's just confirming that we're not keeping the public hearing open until the 17th. Thank you for catching that. Yes, and it was properly noticed. Thank you. I know you mentioned that, and we went back, and I could not figure out where the, the offending date was, so.
Do we require an amendment? I could make that, or was it just?
Yeah, yeah, well, we first need to get through the motion to close the public hearing. So, now that the motion has been made and seconded to close the public hearing, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Great, the public hearing is now closed. All right, is there any further commissioner comments or questions before we move on to Resolution 2303? All right, we'll move on to Resolution 23 dash 03. Would someone like to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
I would second.
Would anyone like to offer any amendments to Resolution 23 dash 03?
I would like to offer the amendment of changing the date of Item G to public hearing on October 3.
Do I hear a second for that amendment?
Second.
All right. Do we need to do a roll-call vote for the amendment, or just the underlying, or the main motion?
I think we typically do for functional votes.
All right, well, is there any discussion on this amendment? I think we're good to go with a roll-call vote.
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Yes.
And Acting Chair Atkins.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the motion has been amended. Is there any other discussion on the motion to approve Resolution 23 dash 03? All right, we'll move on.
I just want to make sure that, you know, we, Commissioner Ballard. I just want to make sure that, you know, we, Commissioner Ballard entertained and explored the idea of changing, like, Your 3, Your 4, you know, from conditional to permitted. Is there any additional discussion we want to have on that, or do we feel comfortable about that?
All right, we feel good.
Disregard.
All right, any further discussion? We're ready for the roll call vote.
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes.
Commissioner Ballard?
Yes.
Commissioner Finch?
Yes.
Commissioner Yanisak?
Yes.
Commissioner Zelinski?
Yes.
And Acting Chair Adkins?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we did some work today. We'll move on to Agenda Item 4B, the Climate Change and Sustainability Element Introduction with a presentation by Becky.
And just last thing on the last one, I, we will look at the opportunities to streamline the, the regulations on schools, and we will take a look at this process in action over the winter. So, even without the, the action, the point is well taken by staff. So, thank you for that.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here now with another element of the COT Plan. So, our goal has been, or our approach has been, to bring these elements to you, get you familiar with them. And then, as we do our work to make our updates and amendments, we'll be bringing them back to you for more in-depth discussion about what those updates are. And so, anyway, I wanted to make sure you are aware that these initial presentations are to just introduce you to the element, so you're aware of what it contains and what we'll be working on. I have with me Jennifer Gregerson. She's actually the one who spearheads the Climate Action Plan. So, she's here tonight to give a, an update of what we've done in terms of climate change and sustainability. So, talk a little bit about a background, then the GMA goal that's associated with climate action, what we're using for inputs into our update, the areas of focus, which are very specific. The mayor did this year also issue a mayoral directive on climate change. Talk about the racial equity and social justice that's associated with this element. Again, talk about the Climate Action Plan and the update of that, and then any questions that you might have. It's a long goal. Anyway, it's about climate change, and they use the word resiliency, somewhat the same as sustainability. We may want to think about changing it. So, really, it's to adapt and mitigate the effects of climate change. The two important pieces there are the reduction of greenhouse gases and vehicle miles traveled, and that we prepare for the climate impact scenarios, that we foster resiliency to those natural hazards or natural, natural disasters. We're trying to get ahead of protecting, enhancing economic, environmental, and human health and safety. And then, again, the important piece in the newest legislation around this subject is to advance environmental justice. I did provide links in the staff report to, to these, but we're starting out with our state law that gives us guidance on what we need to do with the elements. Our multi-county planning policies have very similar goals around the subject, and that trickles down to the countywide planning policies. We did add in 2015, a climate element into the comprehensive plan. And then, the follow-on work was a climate action plan. It was an implementation. And then, in 2023, the mayoral directive. So, you will see some similar themes around the goals and the objectives. Very specific, expand and restore green spaces and natural areas, and this is probably an obvious why. But that, those are important things to climate change, to the CO2 emissions, helping clean the air, the heat island effect. Also, the mayor reiterated the support of a citywide transition to zero emission vehicles. And that includes the city, city fleets, to reduce or eliminate the use of fossil fuels for city-owned buildings and facilities. You may know that we've got a bicycle master plan that's being implemented over time. It's continuing to be implemented with projects. And that's to improve the walkability and encourage non-motorized ways for people to get around the city. And that the city is a model of sustainability. So, in the, in the Puget Sound Clear Agency has issued some targets for the Puget Sound Region, which is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 50% below 1990 levels by 2030. So, that's another 17 years. And the reason is on a trajectory to achieve the state goal of 95% below the 1990 levels by 2050. So, just as a background under a no-action future, then we could estimate that greenhouse gas emissions would go up by 66% by 2050 instead of that reduction. We estimate that existing federal, state, and regional policies will help reduce greenhouse gases by 20%. But additional targets are really needed to make some more headway and to meet the goals that, that we've set. So, those are, again, 50% reduction by 2030, 60% reduction by 2040, and 80% reduction by 2050. As you'll recognize, when York talked about some information we had about the schools, it does not match the 2044, but we do have the information for the 2050 horizon. I'm not going to bring this up, but just to show you that there's a number of resources all over the United States, actually all over the world, that help us to get measurements and help us to determine how, how to achieve our goals, as well as are we achieving our goals, the measurement and the metrics for those. So, this is one of the tools that the University of Washington has made, and it's a climate mapping for resilient Washington. Certainly happy to send that link to you if, if you'd like to play around with that. And then, in terms of our environmental justice, it's the idea that people of all cultures, races, ethnicities, and socio-economic backgrounds deserve the fair protection from environmental and health hazards, as well as equal access to the decision-making process behind environmental policies and development. So, not these particular maps, but there is mapping that show, you know, where our environmental vulnerabilities are in relation to where our population demographics are. And, and a lot of times, we'll see that the, that, that a lot of the populations are people of color, and other ethnicities will tend to be moved into places where there are higher risks. So, that's something that the state law does ask us to address. So, another big piece, and you'll see, Climate Action just touches just about every other COT Plan element, and a lot of functional planning that we do in the city. One of those is the Hazard Mitigation Plan. So, that's more of a tool to address the adaptation for addressing those natural disasters like wildfires or flooding. We're required to have a disaster mitigation plan that makes us eligible for FEMA grants. And that's important should we have a disaster that we need support for. This plan, it's a 2018 plan right now, and we are currently updating that. So, we, the Office of Disaster Management, no.
In the city?
Yeah.
Emergency Management.
Emergency Management Disaster, yeah. They are doing an update of that plan right now. And it will discuss our resource organization, making sure they're being efficient, and we have the resources that we're going to need, doing that initial risk assessment. They'll be going out to engage with the public to share and get feedback, because, so, a lot of times, people that live in the area know what's happening more than, than we might just looking at a map. So, there'll be goals and objectives, and actions, and obviously maintenance and implementation strategies. And so, this does cover all departments within the city. So, the current element, as I mentioned, it really focuses on two main areas. The first one being reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And that topic just crosses over land use. So, how do you use land efficiently and, and use it in a way that doesn't promote fossil fuels? Transportation, the obvious one. Buildings and energy use, reducing that you might be, we have an amazing example here in our community, Hope Work Station. It's just phenomenal when it comes to how they've designed their energy and, to a point where, you know, they're, they're making energy as opposed to using it. Examples like that. And then, our solid waste reductions are very important to that as well. And it affects our economy. We are fortunate here to have some very innovative, new energy companies that are trying to come up with new ways to provide energy that aren't giving us greenhouse gases. And I cannot remit, is it Fusion?
Uh-huh.
Yes, Fusion is the, one of those, and we're excited to have them in our backyard. The other area that we've talked about is adapting to the impacts of climate change. I think around here, we see more in terms of the extreme storms, the wind storms, and how that affects us. The sea level rise, there's not a huge risk at this point, but it's something as a coast city on the water that we have to be mindful of. Our increased temperatures, especially our streams and our creeks that have our fish and wildlife, and how other ecosystems might respond to the climate change. It affects public health, agriculture and food, and obviously, emergency planning. So, now, I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer to talk about what's been done. And I have to bring up the document.
All right. Well, while you do that, Jennifer Gregerson, your Government Affairs Director at the city, but I also get to work on climate and sustainability and some other things. So, our most recent Climate Action Plan was adopted in 2020, early 2020, and that followed an original 2011 plan. Thanks to Commissioners Finch, Lark, Yanisak, and Zelinski for you, your contributions. You were on the Planning Commission when we, when that was adopted. Since then, staff in the mayor's office have had responsibility to track accomplishments and, and make sure that we were implementing that action plan. The plan set a vision that is, is actually a requirement as we update the climate element in the comprehensive plan, to have a vision. So, it's good. If we can't flip through the slides, I have, I can just talk to them. It's fine, too.
Yeah, I, I did, you do have this document in front of you.
That's perfect. So, the vision that is in that original, or the 2020 plan, is that the city of Everett is a leader in climate action and the green economy. We partner with communities and businesses to work towards carbon neutrality, sustain healthy, resilient, livable communities, preserve the natural environment and a robust local economy, and enhance quality of life for all residents and for generations to come. And it set two main targets, and Becky talked a little bit about greenhouse gas emissions targets. One of them aligned really with the state goals, too, is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 50% by 2030, both in city operations and in the community. And then, to be carbon-neutral in city operations by 2050, and to have a reduction of 80% by 2050 in the community. And then, the plan also focused more on resilience rather than adaptation. The Hazard Mitigation Plan is one that is more, a little bit more, kind of has that adaptation lens. And, as noted, we issued an update of our implementation successes so far, just a couple months ago in June. So, I will just talk about a couple of the highlights from that, and you have the, all of the backup on that. A, a big piece of, of implementation was two new positions. So, there are Resource Conservation Manager, and we had a great person who found another opportunity, but I think that they have filled that role. And that really focuses on resource consumption around, like, water and energy. Of course, the city has got, you know, being a very full-service city, there's a lot of potential to take great actions. So, water, energy, and also greenhouse gas emissions from buildings and operations. We have that, I believe that position is filled again. And then, our Resource Development and Sustainability Manager. There is a website, actually, if you just look, go to the city website and search for Climate Action Plan, that, that's how I find it. That's kind of the easiest way to find it as well. So, we've got it, you know, kind of a public-facing portal. The state, different, sort of turning the page to another category. There have long been state requirements about, about commute trip reduction. So, saving emissions just from our commute trip patterns and telecommuting. But, and the city had great policies in place, fortunately for this city, but others were challenged by this pre-COVID. We built that program out and established good policies around that. And then, Everett Transit also helps implement our businesses in Everett that have to also comply with those regulations, so providing them support as they encourage their employees to also practice good habits there. Becky mentioned the Bike Master Plan and kind of helping folks get around the community in different ways rather than just in cars. And we've got, of course, most recently, some bike projects around Madison and Fleming. Madison's my favorite one because that's where I had my bike accident in April. It was all my fault. I just, like, took a turn, and if I'd had a bike lane, I guarantee I wouldn't have crashed my bike. So, it's nice to see that bike lane there. Along with biking, shared mobility projects. We've got the Bird scooters here downtown. Those are a good part of last first mile, but really, just like, you know, during the day trips, too. We are working, thanks to a grant that PUD has, or maybe just funding, actually, I guess I'm not sure, money from PUD, on fleet electrification. So, there's a consultant that they're sort of sponsoring through some method, and they're working with our facilities folks on looking at a 10-year plan for electrification of the city's full fleet. Great advancements, of course, with buses, but the city's got lots of other vehicles that we could, where we could look at future electrification. Both our water pollution control facility and water filtration plants have had energy-saving projects in this timeframe between the, you know, 2020 and basically June of 23, when we issued that report. Green building broadly, so not just the water facilities, but our other facilities as well. Becky mentioned that part of this is also ensuring that the city is a green technology hub. So, Helion and Zap Energy, Terra Power, Zero Avia, E, Aviation, Magni X are all companies we're proud to have in Everett. Sustainable Aviation Fuel as well. So, Boeing has worked on that for a long time. And of course, the county is working on a Sustainable Aviation Fuel Center. Stormwater management, some of that, you know, there's a lot of regulations from state and federal government, but there are still good accomplishments to be made protecting our environment generally. Not, I guess, maybe always speaking to greenhouse gas emissions, but to climate action in general. So, great work in stormwater management. We have a somewhat unique public work stockyard that is highlighted in that report that helps us reuse materials. And it is an impressive space, if you've ever kind of headed that direction from here. Since the Climate Action Plan, we've adopted a sustainable purchasing policy that, a big piece of that is looking at an analysis of lifecycle costing. And then, my favorite policy that helps the climate is allowing for more housing, including higher density development, housing choices, and active transportation options. All right, that's my whirlwind tour of the Climate Action Plan, and happy to have your questions. And I think there are more slides to the presentation also, but next steps, that's a good final. a good final slide.
Excuse me. We'll be updating the element and bringing that back to you. Also, you'll see some work in our environmental impact statement that we're, that's currently being written around climate change issues and also the environmental justice piece of that. So yes, any questions or anything else that you would like us to cover?
I just want to commend the closing statement by Jennifer, how important and essential density is to achieving a green and sustainable future. I think that is, cannot be underscored enough. I, and with that, though, if we're looking at multimodal transportation, do we have any idea? I mean, in my mind, I think about, you know, how do we bring people out of their cars into viable sidewalks and allow that? And I see a lot of great examples, like, for example, in Atlanta, there's the Beltway, which integrates parks and linear parks into transit ecosystems and connects, does a great job connecting the community. There's the necklace, I think, in Boston, I think it's called, that connects all the parks, also kind of used for transit. And when I was living in Seoul, my favorite place to run was an old decommissioned rail line that had become a greenway, and on either side of it was 30-story buildings. And so how is the city thinking about, you know, reclaiming carbon-intensive transportation spaces and converting them to green spaces? And do you, and is the city thinking about dense, increased density bonuses around that and reduced parking requirements around that? He asks very leadingly.
There's a lot. Lots to that question. I would say that, I mean, I think that that is broadly on our radar. I mean, sometimes, sometimes our, you know, thinking about housing, we're at like a real micro level, thinking about individual, you know, single-family lots and what can be built there. I would say some, maybe, maybe in the context of like station area planning, we've got a good stationary plan, light rail station, you know, for the north end of town, for that, you know, sort of metro Everett. But when we think about the future of the south parts of Everett and what that looks like, you know, city-owned property, I know we, the administration, the mayor's administration is is looking at making sure that there's good clarity around city priorities and policies related to our property when there's opportunities to, you know, when water and sewer don't need this parcel, what are the kind of guiding principles we should use for reuse? And sometimes those are are big parcels that could have that kind of like, maybe they're not brownfield, but that kind of like brownfield reclamation, like transformation kind of feel. That seems relevant to your comment. Yeah, I don't know. Yeah, you can, or a director.
No, York, you cannot. From behind my, my little wall here. Just implementing the regional growth strategy and the regional transportation plan is a huge step. And I, it's, it's, you almost take that for granted, but there's a lot riding on it, and there's a lot of work yet to be done to implement that. For Everett, just by doing the difficult work to, as you said, with density, accommodate these substantial growth targets and actually succeed at that is one of the most impactful things that we can do. So we're already planning for it, and we're already doing it, but we need to actually succeed at that for those, those reductions to occur. Similarly, the regional transportation plan focuses significantly on expansion of high-capacity transit throughout the region, expanding local transit, and only strategically expanding highway capacity, for instance, while coupling that with a financial strategy that includes road usage charges and other pricing mechanisms to shift some of that demand. Puget Sound Regional Council, Puget Sound Clean Air Agency are both working really hard on those greenhouse gas reductions plans at the regional level. Of course, every level higher up the chain until you get to worldwide is better than the local, so there's only a little bit that we can do. There's a lot that we could do together as a, as a region, and then even more farther along. A couple of statistics. So in January at the Puget Sound Regional Council, there was a presentation to the regional staff committee, so I'll borrow a couple of things from here. Just the CAFE standard, so the the national requirements on fuel efficiency will push down 22%, get us to 22% above 1990 levels by 2050. And remember, our goal is mine is 80% below. So the CAFE standards get us 22% below. You add the Vision 2050 growth strategy in the regional transportation plan, and that gets us to 6% below 1990 levels. Complete decarbonization of the transportation fleet would get us down to that below 80% of below 1990 levels. They did some sensitivity tests on some different things because the executive board asked PSRC staff to look at, we're sort of on track as long as we implement all of this and succeed on all of this, we're sort of on track for 2050. We're not at all on track for 2030. So they looked, asked, the board asked the PSRC staff to look at what it would take to meet some of those 2030 targets. And increasing the user fees for, so the transportation pricing, the plan assumes 10 cents a mile peak and 5 cents a mile off-peak. If you got that up to like 50 cents a mile, then you could reduce them. So that's a pretty significant cost, and the downside of that, of course, is the cost of travel, getting to work, and it hits lower incomes especially hard. So you need to have a whole bundle of tools that come along with that, transit, of course, but then there's other things as well. Changing the transit system is more impactful later when the regional growth strategy has people living closer to where the transit is. But it was not very sensitive to changing transit in the, in the very short term. Work from home had an impact. Roadway capacity projects, we have so many roadways already that it was tough to see a really big change there. And then increased adoption of zero emission vehicles and all the electrification tools that would come with it was another big one. So I guess wrapping that up, doing what we're doing and what we're planning for and making sure that we actually achieve it is probably the biggest thing that Everett can do. And a lot of the other really impactful things are going to take regional and statewide collaboration, and I think the structure is is in place there. Everett can certainly take a leadership role within those venues.
I had a quick question. Jennifer, you mentioned the efforts to look at electrifying the city's fleet. Just out of curiosity, does that include even like emergency vehicles, police department? I imagine they have one of the larger fleets in the, in the city.
The analysis does include that, yeah.
Okay.
And there are, there is a city just south of here that electrified some of the police detectives' vehicles, because there's a sense that like, that's kind of the, you know, they need it all day, but they don't need it for the, they don't, maybe they don't need the power, the kind of assumptions about the power of the electric vehicles that are on, kind of on the market now. So, yeah, I mean, I think there are some models, there's probably some possibilities there. And it's a, you know, looking to the future, too. So, yeah, yeah.
I was going to just make a cheap shot about the landscaping progress over at City Hall, but I'll table that for now.
It looks nice over there.
Yeah, it's only been about 10 years.
I just, I've just been here like a year and a half, so to me, it's like, it's amazing. You guys do this every two years.
The, so the, I think one of the elements that's interesting about this is the compact multimodal land use. And it reminds me that the light rail station, getting that as close to the center of downtown, making sure that design is approachable is very important. It seems like a great opportunity in front of us and that we should really lean into it. The other thing I think about is the Park District, because I wonder if a development like that is being evaluated in the context of this plan and the aims of this plan. Given the number of commute trips that something like that might generate, the proximity of a development like that to employment centers, it's not proximate. And so, again, that's me saying I like those projects, I like them downtown.
Thanks.
Any further questions or comments? All right. Do we have anyone here in person that would like to provide public comment?
Am I allowed to just ask something? Okay.
Oh, hey. Go to the mic.
Oh, go to the mic, okay.
And you have to turn it on, too. There's a button.
And you have to state your name and your address.
I'll help you.
Really?
Becky will.
Okay.
It's on, you're good.
Oh, all right.
My name- City of residence, you don't have to say your whole address.
City of residence, not my full address. All right. My name is Annie Landis, I live in Everett. And I didn't come with this question, but as I was reading through the booklet, I was wondering if there's been any exploration into composting, composting infrastructure. I think that'd be really helpful in lowering our greenhouse gas emissions, and my neighbors would appreciate me not putting my banana peels in our backyard.
I want to say that's in the climate action plan.
Yeah, it's under solid waste.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Do we have any, any remote comments?
No comments.
All right, we'll move on to the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update Project Status with Becky.
Thank you again. This will be, I think, fairly short, but we're going to put this on the agenda every, every meeting so that we can give you an update of where we are as we near our final months of trying to get this project accomplished. So the things that we're working on, the council did approve the, the three growth alternatives and the specific amendments as the planning commission recommended. So we're doing our land capacity analysis on that. We are definitely going through and reviewing, updating of the comprehensive plan elements that you haven't seen. We'll continue to bring those introductions to you. And I did provide a list of at least the development regulations we know are going to need to be amended as part of this process. That is just a very short list that we had to provide to Commerce in the beginning of our grant period. And then we're underway of writing our draft supplemental environmental impact statement. I already talked about the other one. We are developing new visualization and public information tools, and I'm going to demonstrate that here next. We are going to be doing some public participation during this phase, phase three, but it's going to look a little different because we're kind of in the background doing all of our work, but we still want to keep the community engaged in, in this project. And then I wanted to share with you that our economic development department is engaged, just starting a web triangle economic development strategy that will feed into this process. And if you don't know what web is, it is the triangle of, I should bring it up on a map. It's a triangle where the three light rail stations are the Boeing 526 Evergreen and then the airport provisional station. So all of that area, we've considered, it's Westmont, Holly-
Evergreen.
Evergreen and Boeing. So that's just an acronym that we created for this area. But it could involve some land use changes, and it's going to be, I don't know, about a six, eight-month process, so it's going to meet up with the comp plan right at the right time and give some attention to that area with all the things that are happening. I did provide this list, but the increased density bonus for affordable housing on properties owned by religious organizations, this has actually been in effect for a while, we just have not changed our code. The middle housing, as we've talked about before, small item where we have to limit impact fees for early learning facilities. HB 1293 from the 2023 legislation, which says our, our design guidelines, our design standards have to be objective, so we'll need to do that audit. There will be updates to the stormwater regulations per municipal stormwater permit this time around, and then you've seen some of the rethink zoning amendments come through, but we're going to try and incorporate as many of those as we can into this process. Now, hoping this works. This is an interactive tool that will be online, so anybody can go in and take a look at their property and see, based on the three alternatives, what's being proposed. The one caveat I wanted to, to share is that for some of the growth geographies, they're more of a graphical line as opposed to carved-out parcel lines. And so we wanted to try to make sure that people understood that that's the way they're represented. Let me see if it'll come up.
It's not on the internet, I don't think.
Isn't it? Okay, well, I'm just going to talk about it a little bit, but, so sorry. There's a legend here, well, it won't go, it's going to try. Darn it. But it's really nice, so it's a legend. There's, you can see, there's alternative one, two, and three, but if you actually, we did add a new category today if you want to do a comparison. So if you click on the growth alternatives comparison, I think it says, it will, you could press on the property, and they'll tell you what each alternative has designated for that property. And so we've also put in the height map, just in case folks were interested, and, and the zoning map. But we hope this will be a tool for folks. When you first bring it up, there's an instruction box, so it tells you how to do it and what to click. So once you get that, we'll be announcing that it's available to the public. Go in and test it out. Please feel free to email me with anything that's not working or any suggestions that you have, we would appreciate that. But this is a marvelous tool, and Erica Spencer, our GIS specialist, has just done a marvelous job of putting this together. So, yeah, I really wanted to demo it. I've been looking forward to it all week.
You know when it will be up on the-
Either tomorrow or Friday. Yeah.
All right. Do we have any questions or comments? None? All right. Is there anyone that would like to provide public comment that's in person? Do we have anyone online?
No comments.
All right. We get to the best part of the meeting. We are adjourned.